Was I just talking to you a minute ago?
So, who's on? Okay, Councillors Duran and Beck, could you please mute your mic if you're not speaking?
Uh, okay.
So there's no feedback?
Sorry?
What's that? Okay. First of all, we acknowledge that the land upon which we gather is unceded Nigma territory. Called to order, I just want to thank Fusion Charlatan. I know Councillor MacLeir was out on the cleanup of the trail, Confederation Trail, this past Saturday. And there was a lot cleaned up on both sides, going out as far as, I think, the arterial highway. Councillor MacLeir, did you go up that far? Yeah. Yeah, so it was a good day for it, and I think there's going to be another one. And Holtley Parks and Recreation will be looking at doing a cleanup somewhere in the downtown part of the trail, because there's a lot of work to be done. Okay, declarations of conflict of interest? No declarations, approval of agenda. Councillor Twill? Okay, is there an appetite to move them, or do we want to deal with these presentations?
It's willing to take a couple of minutes.
Is there any desire? Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, go ahead.
Although I see, you know, Mitchell's point, I'm just a bit concerned because we have two presentations of folks that are here scheduled in, and those resolutions could be very straightforward. But in the event that they're not, I just think we should be respectful of those that are presenting their time. That's just my two cents worth, but I'll see what others want.
Councillor Twill?
Yep, no, this will only take two or three minutes to pass two resolutions. Won't be long.
Councillor McCabe?
Is there a reason why we have to move them up?
What's that, Councillor Twill?
I have to leave, I got another commitment.
You do. What's the wish? Okay. Move them up? Move them up?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, Councillor Bernard, did you have to say something on the agenda? You're all right?
Yeah, I am all right. I think the reason there's some hesitation, this has happened two or three times before, and the council never left.
Right.
So if there's a reason you got to go, then probably state the reason, and then it's fine. I mean, it's not going to take very long, so.
Yeah, that's right, no, I have to leave.
Okay. Okay, let's move them up. So that makes four D. Parks and Recreation Resolutions, Peaks Key, enclosure of Victoria Park laneway to vehicular traffic. Up to A, and A becomes B, B becomes C, so forth. Good? Okay. Frank, are you going to give the overall? I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, do you want to give the overview of the first one?
I'll wait till the resolutions are read.
Yeah, so you're going to speak to it, or are you going to get Frank to speak to it? You're going to speak to it, okay, go ahead.
Parks, Recreation and Leisure Activities Committee Resolution Number One, moved by Councillor Twill and seconded by Councillor Matar. Be it resolved that the City of Charlatan agrees to provide Charlatan Area Development Corporation partnership capital funding in the amount of $13,000 so that renovations can be completed to the Peaks Wharf public washrooms located at PID number 872028, and that the city agrees to renew the lease agreement with Waterfront Investments, the landlord of PID 872028, for five years, 2023 to 2027, for the purpose of providing public washrooms at this location at an annual contribution of $22,000 for 2023 with an annual consumer price index adjustment.
Okay, Councillor Twill? You speaking of the resolution?
Thank you. The public washrooms at this location are essential. Essential to the public, which CADC and the city needs to continue to support. There are two parts to the resolution before you this evening. First, there is a request for the city to provide partnership in terms of capital dollars, 13,000, to CADC so that the renovations can be completed to Peaks Wharf's public washrooms. The scope of the Wharf includes removing three showers and installing three single-use washrooms. Secondly, Waterfront Investments has requested to enter a five-year lease agreement, and since CAD City and the city is contributing capital dollars to renovating these washrooms, it makes sense for the city to renew the lease after a five-year period. The city's annual contribution, amount of 2023, will be 22,000 with the annual CPI adjustment. And at this time, I'd like to thank Liam Dolan for initiating this particular partnership. I think it makes a lot of sense. This will give us more washrooms down this particular tourism destination. It's a very popular venue, and I think it'll work out well. Staff's supportive of the recommendation, I'm certainly supportive, the committee was, and we bring it here for council's consideration. Thank you.
Okay. And also thanks should go out to Peter Toombs. I know that they were working with Mr. Liam Dolan, and so was Valerie Dockerty, so I want to extend it to him. Frank, do you want to add anything? Good. Okay. Questions? Councillor MacLeir?
Yeah, just on the 22,000 five-year contribution or CPI indexed, is that just for like a maintenance thing? Or?
You have to ask the Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Councillor Twill? Yeah. Put your mic down.
Thank you for the question, Councillor MacLeir, yes it is.
And does CADC, do they contribute anything over a five-year period as well? Do we know?
Councillor Twill?
Yes, they do, they contribute on an annual basis as well. I think it's about 7,000, Frank?
I'm unable to infer the exact.
Okay, but yes, they do. It is truly a partnership with the city, CADC, and some of the businesses down in the waterfront.
Yeah. Councillor Bernard?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to say the 7,000 was towards the capital cost to take the showers out and put the extra washrooms in. That was CAD's capital cost.
And I did phone CADC, and Liam Dolan does own the building and the property. He bought the whole package, just the property. He's the only property that's owned by the outside of CADC. Okay? Ready? Question? Questions come, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Duran?
In favor.
Councillor Beck?
In favor.
Ten, zero. Okay. Resolution Number Two. CAO Eleanor?
Thank you, Parks, Recreation and Leisure Activities Committee Resolution Number Two, moved by Councillor Twill, seconded by Councillor Bernard. Be it resolved that from May 1st, 2023 to October 31st, 2023, the interior laneway of the Victoria Park roadway be closed to vehicular traffic to allow for the laneway to be used as an active transportation pathway.
Councillor Twill?
The annual closure of Victoria Park laneway to vehicle traffic. As you're aware, the interior laneway is closed each season, May 1st, October 31st, to vehicle traffic to allow for the laneway to be used for wheel activity, i.e. cycling, as stated in the Victoria Park Prominent Bylaw. Due to the impacts of COVID-19 on our community over the past three years, council has approved the expanded use to permit all modes of active transportation. Please refer the definition of active transportation in the background. This expanded use was well received by the community publicly, so it is being recommended that this expanded use be continued for the year 2023. To address the expanded use being permitted in the future, changes will be made to the bylaw and brought to council for council's consideration. Thank you.
Questions called, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, Councillor Duran?
In favor.
Councillor Norman Beck, Ward Three?
Yes. I do have a question, is there? We're very, and pardon me, but is there, was there discussions of making that a permanent? Leaving it permanently closed to as a act of transportation? I'm just asking, that's just out of curiosity, because I thought I heard some discussion of making it a permanent.
Councillor Beck, I know that the Chair wants to discuss, but if we want to close it permanently, we have to go to a public consultation on it. Councillor Twill?
Thank you for the question, Councillor Beck. That is correct. I think there's strong support from the community to have this closed permanently for vehicle traffic, so we can enjoy this during the four seasons. There needs to be more collaboration, a consultation to take place. But it's an excellent question, and something that I've been promoting for the past number of years. So I really thank you for the question, and we'll look back to you with more specific information as to where we go from here.
Okay, Councillor Beck, yea or nay?
Yeah, I would support this motion that we have, and I would welcome further discussion at later time.
Okay.
That's great.
Ten, zero.
Just one question.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, CAO Eleanor. Thank you, sir. Take care of yourself. Okay. Thank you, Frank. So we have two presenters, and I will let them introduce themselves. If you wish to address any of the councillors, I know you can't see all their name tags, but Deputy Mayor Yankop, Councillors Bernard, MacLeir, Ramsey, Matar, Councillor Matar, Councillor McCabe, and Councillor McKinnon. And on the phone is Councillor Duran and Councillor Beck. And as you know, Councillor Twill just left. Okay? So can you introduce yourselves, please?
Great, thank you. My name is Rebecca Jessman, and I'm the Director of Program Planning and Operations for Mental Health and Addictions with Health PEI.
Good evening, I'm Wayne Walker, I'm the Executive Director of Mental Health Addictions Capital Planning.
So Rebecca, are you starting, or is Wayne starting?
I will be starting.
Thank you very much.
So thank you, everybody, for giving us some time today. We really appreciate the opportunity to provide you an update on some really exciting developments that are important for islanders and very important for the community of Charlatan. So first, I want to recognize that the redevelopment that I'll be sharing with you today will be sited on the traditional territory of the Nigma peoples that they have cared for for generations. I also want to ground the work that we're doing from a capital perspective in the overall vision of community first, which states that all people living in PEI will have an equal opportunity to achieve and maintain the best possible mental health and well-being throughout their lifetime. In order to achieve that vision, we recognize that there are multiple investments needed. We know that people heal when they're surrounded by their supports in their communities. So we know that acute care is only a small part of that picture. If you see the pyramid that's on the slide, when we talk about intensive inpatient care, that tends to be what people think of when they think of mental health and addictions, because it tends to be the most visible. But we know that the greatest impact is, in fact, at the base of the pyramid, in early intervention, in prevention, in outreach, and in interactions with our family physicians, for example. So it's important to recognize that while we're speaking mostly to the top of the pyramid, we need to continue to have a focus on the base of the pyramid, because without that focus, without those investments in an integrated continuum and multidisciplinary care, the pyramid topples over. So an important part of that is the development of community health centers across the island, including two to be located in Charlatan. The one that is most developed at this time is in Alberton, and that's the construction photos that you see in front of you. Those community health centers will co-locate primary care, public health, and mental health and addiction services. They'll be supported by community programming, which includes FACT teams, which are assertive outreach teams that help to support people in community to prevent them from repeated stays in acute care, to help them transition and to help them maintain those community connections, support for community-based withdrawal, reducing reliance on inpatient withdrawal management, stepped care, so the idea of supporting people as they move through and across different levels of acuity and severity across the continuum of services. Of course, building those services across the continuum within Mental Health and Addictions Health PEI, as well as with community partners. And we've also invested in a navigator to, who is, you know, a person that you can call on a warm line, who can help you to navigate what we recognize as a complex system. So that's the brief background, and I'm going to turn it to Wayne to talk a bit about the capital itself.
Sure. Thank you. So essentially, there are 11 projects inside of our capital plan. I'll talk about the ones that are outside of Charlatan, and I'll kind of come back to Charlatan to the campus here. So we have a project at the PCH that is still, we're waiting on a functional plan for that project. We are working on a project currently, ED Short Stay Unit, currently being built onto the back end of the QEH Hospital, which we're about 60% complete of right now, looking for substantial completion in September. We will be putting the new child and youth program inside the current Unit Nine. So that is a project that we have a functional plan for, but we're waiting on direction from the Department of Health to get moving on that project. We also have the projects that are currently in place and running and handed over to Health PEI, which is the former Lacy and Women's Extended Care. And we have structured housing, which are up and operational. Those two are right there on the pink side, the first two pink boxes. So the first one's Lacy, and then structured housing. So we're going to develop the north side of the street. So there's going to be a street that's running all the way through. Byerson Drive will turn into Deacon Grove Lane. The next two buildings, which is a building, kind of looks like an L, a pink L, and then the big blue box, the big blue box is the replacement for the current Hillsborough Hospital. The box beside it, the L, sorry, the pink is the Addictions Wellness, is the name. We changed the names.
The Mental Health and Addiction Wellness Transitions Center.
It's mouthful. So those are the two that we're coming out of design development on currently. And then we're looking at, we have four decommissions on this project as well, including the current Hillsborough Hospital, Deacon House, Murchison House, and then there's a large maintenance shed that's on the property as well. So we are looking at going in for tender. I would say we're going to do a prequal on our two biggest projects in August of this coming summer. And we would like to hopefully get in for construction in early New Year. So we're working with your planning department. We have been for a long time. Let's see, folks back here behind me. So Alex and Scott and Richard, we've been working on through all of the issues of the new roadway. We do have a heritage swath that comes in from the corner of Riverside Drive, and it pretty much goes right up to through the grove of trees on the right-hand side. So we are respecting that and working with the city to stay within our guidelines for that as well. We just had to change, or we just had to move our road over a little bit. It was cutting into the heritage property, so working with Todd from your department, from the Heritage Planning Team, so we moved it over and redesigned it. And what we're trying to do is get this to a place where we can take it back and get it in front of the planning team again for any questions or concerns as we go through the process.
All right, so I'm going to take you through a very short snapshot on some of the new programs that are being offered. The handouts that you see in front of you provide a bit of a cheat sheet and a more in-depth description of the new buildings and the new programs that those buildings will offer. Just recognizing that time is short tonight, I didn't want to take the time to go through all of them, but my contact information is on the first page, and do not hesitate to reach out if you have any questions. So as Wayne noted, the next major development will be the Emergency Department and Short Stay Unit, which will be located at the Queen Elizabeth Hospital. It will add seven assessment rooms and four 72-hour mental health and addiction stabilization beds. This is an important development, because we know that one of the most challenging times for folks when they're in crisis or seeking acute care is the emergency department experience. So this will help people to move through that emergency department and get access to people with the specialized skills that they need more quickly and in a more conducive setting. As Wayne noted, the, oh, my photos aren't showing up, but it will. The Addictions Extended Care Building replaced Lacy House, increased the number of beds for women or islanders who identify women from six to 12, and also provides four-day treatment spaces. And that's full day and evening program for individuals who are impacted by substance use. That's a 90-day stay, and has been operating since May 2022, with really excellent feedback from the folks who have been through the program. The structured program opened more recently in January of this year. 28-day program that is brand-new. So this program was not previously in existence, so it offers both bed-based programming and day programming for people who just need a little bit of a lengthier transition time out of acute care, or an opportunity to enter into supported programming that is more life skills-oriented and less about the acute symptom management that they would experience in acute care. As Wayne noted, the Mental Health and Addictions Wellness and Transition Center is a new building that will co-locate two programs. So the first will be the Transitional Addiction Services. Now, these are services that are operating right now out of PATF over at Mount Herbert. So the transition program will be 12 beds, as well as four-day treatment program spaces. And then there will be an addictions-intensive day program that's currently operating up at Sherwood Business Center, which will provide eight intensive day treatment programs, and that's for all genders. And then the new program that will operate out of the facility is a Mental Health and Addictions Transition Program. So this is really for folks who need, these are folks who have been through the system, experienced the system for quite a while, tend to have readmissions, tend to have more difficulty achieving stabilization in the community, and need that longer time to successfully get the life skills and symptom management that they need to succeed independently. So these will be 12 beds, rather, with up to 180 days stay. One back. And then finally, the replacement to the Hillsborough Hospital will provide 64 beds, plus 12-person mental health-intensive day program that is currently operating at the Hillsborough for adult clients of all genders, and it will co-locate acute mental health services with inpatient withdrawal management services. The idea is we're building flexible units that will be able to adapt and change over time as the needs of the population adapt and change over time. All of these services will, of course, need to be supported by recruitment. We are doing significant program development so that people are really getting the skills and the services that they need to re-enter community, again, as we noted at the beginning, to be able to access the supports and achieve the wellness that they can in the community. So we're recruiting across disciplines, we're recruiting for the new programs, and we're working closely with partners, sharing information similar to what we're doing here with you this evening, and learning from the experience and expertise of others in other jurisdictions. And that concludes the presentation, and I welcome any questions or comments.
Yep. Just before he starts, Councillors Beck and Duran, your presentation was sent to you in the package, so if you did follow along, we were looking at the same presentation on the screens here in council chambers. Councillor? Good?
Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Bernard, and then Councillor?
I could follow along, it was good.
Okay, Councillor Bernard, and then Councillor Matar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Rebecca and Wayne. Just a couple of questions from a layperson, I guess. I'm just wondering, some of these eight-day treatment, or 12-day treatments, or 28-day program, if they're getting to the end of that deadline date, and they're not quite rehabilitated, or what have you, do they, what happens after that?
So, excellent question, and that speaks to the continuum of services that we're working on introducing. So if, for example, they're in the structured program, which is 28 days, and, you know, the counseling team is finding that they need more support, rather than just recycling them through the program that they've already been in, we would look at, could they transition to the intensive day program?
Right.
Where, you know, they're on their own in community overnight, but they're accessing services from nine o'clock in the morning until three o'clock in the afternoon, and still have that transitional period to get that support? Or are they accessing perhaps our community mental health teams and community on an as-needed basis? So what we're hoping to do is really flush out that whole continuum so that people have the opportunity to move across and throughout services as they need.
Right, so they're always evaluated, and then recommendations where they should go?
Absolutely.
Perfect. And my last question, just on the recruitment, is that recruitment that you're looking for, is that for the new hospital?
It's for all of the programs, to be honest.
All the programs?
Because we're looking at doing incremental program development, rather than just everything brand-new the day we open the doors. So the Mental Health Intensive Day Program is a great example, where we've stood up that new program at the Hillsborough Hospital over the last couple of months, and that did involve recruiting new staff to that. And we're looking at more multidisciplinary approaches, so recruiting- And we're looking at more multidisciplinary approaches, so recruiting things like occupational therapists to a greater extent than we had in the past.
So it's just not the people that worked in Riverside Hospital now, it's, it's that plus? You need, you're going to need more skills?
Exactly. That's correct.
Thank you. Interesting.
Can I just, I'll just add too as well, so the current Hillsborough Hospital is 99,000 square feet. Then the new hospital bill is coming, is trending at 176,000 square feet.
176, 176, 176.
So Wayne, is that going up? Is that building up or going out?
That is only two stories.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's going, it's going to be kind of, it's going to be a wider building, longer building, but there'll be more services in it to the recruitment and retention question. We're going to be having more, more therapeutic, we'll have milieu and therapeutic, we're going to have staff that we don't currently have that we're going to be recruiting for, continuing, continually to recruit for right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that building, that new building, if I remember seeing or the last presentation you made, or you made, that would be going into where the, the road, it comes into the new road where it starts to turn to go towards Riverside Hospital now? Do you come in off Patterson? As you come in to make your turn, that's where the new hospital's going?
At, at the, at the very end of that one.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah. So it'll be the fourth building in on the street.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. And that, and that Deacon Grove will go all the way around and then connect again with Murchison Drive.
So did the design, did that change anyway since you presented a couple of years ago?
Not, not the street or anything like of that, Counsel Bernard, no. The street has remained the same. It's always been a priority for us to have that, and the active transportation routes is something we talked about in the past as well.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you.
Counsel Matarde.
Great. Thank you, Rebecca and Wayne, for your presentation. It's great to see new, the programs and services being offered at the Mental Health Addiction Campus. Looks to be a multi-purpose utility. My question is around, are these facilities, are this facility designed to address other programs such as outreach, harm reduction, and shelters?
The, these programs are not intended to provide housing. So in terms of the shelter service, social development and housing will continue to, to look into expanding that independently. In terms of the harm reduction and outreach services, the community health centers that I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, that's where we're going to have our Mental Health and Addiction community folks co-located with primary care and public health. I can't speak in detail to what programs are going into those buildings, but given the co-location of those three, I believe that's more what we're looking at in terms of more of the harm reduction and outreach centers.
Great. Thank you very much.
And I will note that there is also ongoing discussion independent at Department of Health and Wellness and with public health about what some of the health, harm reduction facilities will look like.
Good. Thank you.
Counsel McLaren.
Yeah, does, is there any connection or overlap with the Mount Herbert?
Yes. So there's a two-part question to that. So the plan is to decommission PATF Mount Herbert after, for this plan. So those patients, and I'll pass this over to Rebecca, they're going to be kind of dispersed through a couple of the buildings on the site. But PATF will be closing as a part of this project and will be, it will go back into the, into a wanted building for the province, I would assume.
So right now, the three programs at PATF are the inpatient withdrawal management, which will be part of the new acute care hospital, the addiction transition unit, which will be part of the second new building that we spoke to, the L-shaped building. And then the third component is, there's the community withdrawal management component, which we anticipate will move into one of the new community health centers.
Counsel Duron or Dr. Beck?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. That would be my brother, your worship.
And his father was a psychiatrist. Oh, ahead there, Dr. Beck.
Um, yeah, so in gold, you clarified on the decommissioning of Mount Herbert, or so that, that answers a question that I did have. The, um, when I'm looking at the numbers, I think this sounds, it sounds to me like it's much similar to the medical community homes or the medical homes that are starting to be implemented. It's not the same sort of concept where you've got an integrated, one-stop shopping sort of done in a centralized area. It seems to be the same kind of approach. So now that when it comes to mental health and addiction, we're going to know that there's one area to go to in the Charlatan area, and this is that. Am I correct?
To an extent. So a lot of the services will be co-located on the campus, but we are still going to, we're still looking at maintaining a community presence. You know, again, as I mentioned, the community health centers, we anticipate one being co-located with the campus, but there will be one closer to the downtown area as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Does that answer your question?
Okay. Yeah, it does. You, you're showing some numbers around here, like in terms of how many people beds it can accommodate and stuff like that. Is this a, when you look at the numbers that are going to be incorporated with this new mental health and addictions wellness and transitions on it, is this going to see a significant increase in the ability to, the number of clients will be able to service? Or is it basically just keeping, like, is there an impact in terms of how many more than we're, we're currently serving right now? And what we'll be able to, what we, what we will be able to service under the new model?
Yeah, a good question, and, and I, I kind of have a two-part answer. There, there's a net new bed increase across different programs, and also the way that we are structuring the programs, that there is the continuum of services, will help us to move people through services that meet their needs in a more efficient way, which will allow us to serve more islanders.
Okay. Gotcha. I think his worship would like that there's no silos going on here.
You can hear those silos right there, Dr. Beck.
That's a big part of what we're hoping to address.
Counsel Duron, we can't see you. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't, thank you.
Counsel McCabe.
And I was writing my question down, and I think I caught the end of that, and it might have already asked and answered, but I was just looking at the process for like your intakes and stuff. Are these going to be accessible for people in the moment? So, you know, we have people that, by the time we get, make it through an intake process, and then we get in, the window kind of starts really wide when they want to access these services, and then it gets a little bit smaller, and sometimes by that time, it's, it's no more. So is that the hope with this? And I know your recruitment, it must be a real challenge, because unless you're looking at collapsing some of the staffing that you're talking about, keeping open in their community, it's going to be challenging when we already know that we have staff issues in our communities that are existing right now, let alone increasing with excellent philosophy and, and plan. But it is going to be a challenge for sure, if we want to keep that piece real. But will there be a better access where it's not so formal as far as being able to access service?
A short answer is yes. I mean, certainly through the, the new emergency department will, will help to facilitate that intact intake process, and again, through the introduction of, of a better continuum of care, people are better able to navigate through the system. And we're also, we are also developing a stepped-care approach province-wide, which is really, it, it's not a change in the services per se. It does increase the, the kind of more immediate walk-in services in community, but it's also a focus on the connections between the services to help people move better.
Okay. So Rebecca, just a quick question on, it's substance abuse, so that could be alcohol, it could be prescription drugs, illegal drugs. You're covering the whole gamut?
That's correct. And also more so in community than in acute care, but also recognizing behavioral addiction as well, so gambling, video, et cetera.
You're doing that too?
Absolutely. It's all part of our mandate.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. McCabe. Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Very interesting. Once Mount Herbert is closed, like how many beds are in Mount Herbert now? And are we going to, would that be an increased number? At the new place, I guess?
So again, in the new facility, it's, it's, it's a bit difficult to answer that question. So the addictions transition will maintain the, the same number of beds, but because we're using a flexible unit approach for the inpatient, it won't be, for example, 16 beds are dedicated to inpatient withdrawal management. We'll have, we'll have unit wings that can flex over time. So if, for example, we're seeing a tremendous need in the community for more inpatient beds, then we'll be able to shift the, the, the population ratio to meet that need. Conversely, we know actually that there's a lot of evidence supporting increase in community-based withdrawal management rather than relying on inpatient. So hopefully, as, as time passes, we'll be able to actually reduce the demand for inpatient withdrawal management beds and therefore use more of those beds for acute mental health care. But again, we'll have that ability to flex as needed.
So we're basically not losing any numbers?
No.
No. Okay. Thank you.
Wayne, just on the project end of it, when I look at the mixed-use MH and A campus plan, you had the floodline setback?
Yeah.
So that floodline setback goes all the way almost beyond Sherwood Home. So does that mean Sherwood Home's coming down?
No, Sherwood Home's not a part of our project. The, the setback is, is a thousand-year setback, the flood, the flood, the floodplain. So we've had it assessed twice since I came aboard. We are, we're respecting it and, and the environmental, the laws around it and the bylaws. We're setting back even a little further than, because it's a healthcare project, so we're setting back a little further inside of that than, than we probably should have to. But having said that, we, we have shoreline issues, erosion issues around that peninsula there. So we're working with, we're going to, we're doing work with our provincial partners, and we're going to extend that to our federal partners to help us to start to shore up that shoreline, and we have to do that because you have to protect your investment.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. So the new Hillsborough Hospital will be built with flooding in, in mind, that, like, for example, anything we put down on the waterfront, it has to be-
Yeah, I mean, all of the, you know, we looked at, we did all of our, our borehole testing, how far can we actually go down? We're looking at geothermal, how far can we actually dig into, into the, into the, into the soil, into the grounds, the 250s to 350 feet? We're, we're looking at that. There's no bedrock here. It's buried down to shale, and what does that really look like? And so we, I think we, we've got a pretty good handle on that, but I think that it's, it's a continued, every bad storm we have makes me shiver. So I, I think we, we just continue to have those environmental assessments and stay in touch with our friends on the federal side and just really, I don't know if whine is the right word, but I, I can, I could whine to them and say, we need you down here to, to help us out with this. And we're going to be putting active transportation routes all the way through this campus as well. And we're looking at having the, the bus routes, a regular bus route through, through the campus as well. So we've already had those discussions with Mike from the city. So, but we continue to look at that, the floodplain issue. The PID for Sherwood Home is not ours. Sorry, that's, that's not correct. It is ours. I'm trying to unpack that right now. So is in the panel of care.
Right.
So we had 88 acres to, when I, when I took over this project, but we certainly were down to 37 acres on the project because of the floodplain and because the PID numbers weren't set up correctly.
Okay. Because I remember Counsel Bernard and I did a walking tour with the engineering firm. I think you were there too?
Yeah.
And we went right down to the water where-
Yeah, through the berm.
With the old, the old, it was the Bridgeyard?
Yeah.
And you were talking about possible sports fields or something that could be developed down there in the future?
Yeah, so we're parting, well, we're, we're still engaged with the French school. I mean, it's, it's, it's one of these things, if, if we have that space and that background, we're, we're certainly would like to have that discussion with them once the site is fully developed.
Right.
And I think that that's, and I think that they're probably, you know, we've had probably five or six discussions with the school board, and they're kind of just, they're, they're waiting to the site is developed and to see what comes across the street, and then we'll look at what's kind of left for space. Because I know they're doing a major redevelopment of the school as well.
Right.
I don't know what it is completely yet, but-
Yeah. And just, just a couple of quick questions. Is 64 beds right now Hillsborough Hospital? How many beds are in the Hillsborough Hospital presently? The new one's 64, so you must be below that.
I, yeah, I believe it's high 50s.
High 50s. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And then just the two clinics, you had the two health clinics that you mentioned, Rebecca?
The two community health centers?
Yes.
Yeah.
So have you picked sites for those yet here in Charlatan? You said two in Charlatan, or is that the capital region?
So two in Charlatan, we're looking at one co-located on the campus, and the other, I'm not sure, has been confirmed entirely.
Okay.
So the one that's being proposed for the campus is not being managed by the province, it will be managed by Health PEI. So we don't, I don't have a whole lot of knowledge on that, on that build.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Let's, I would really appreciate the presentation and best of luck. I think when we were talking about it a few years ago, Wayne, it was at 160 million?
Yeah.
Yeah. You're probably higher than that now.
A little bit.
Yeah. And that's a federal-provincial fiscal arrangement, or is it all province?
No, it's a, it's, there's a federal partnership there as well, for sure. Yeah.
Right. Okay. Any, any other questions? Well, Rebecca, Wayne, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Very great presentation.
Please see me again.
So next we have a presentation on the Climate Action Plan, and Katrina is here. And you're going to zoom someone in, Katrina? Thanks, Wayne. Did Cindy, was there anything in our package with it? Or just to background her? For the climate change?
No, they're, they're putting up a presentation.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, we can circulate one after if you like. Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, we were just a little bit delayed unfortunately on this one, so we weren't able to include it, but I can send it out with a problem.
So Counselor Beck and Counsel Duron, the, the presentation, they won't be able to get it, get it on their phones. It'll, they have to be in, in, correct? Cindy? They'd have to be here. Well, no, I, that's, I'm trying to clarify that with them. Thank you. Okay. Jessica, or Katrina?
All right. I'll just quickly introduce our presenters and make sure Christina and Jade, are you able to? Wonderful. There you are. So I am happy to welcome Jade Schofield and Christina Schwantes tonight. They are the consultants from WSP ENI Canada that we have been working with on the first phase of the Climate Action Plan development. So because we've been working with them closely, they'll be walking you through the results of that phase this evening. As a reminder, that phase was really setting the stage for the development of the plan itself, so it involved early pre-engagement with community and stakeholders, as well as some background research and benchmarking. So I will turn it over to Jade and Christina for the presentation, and then we'll have a question-and-answer period where you're welcome to direct questions either to them or to myself. So with that, Jade and Christina?
Thanks, Katrina, and just if I could get a thumbs up if you can hear me okay?
Yep, you're good.
I can hear a bit of an echo, but I think we'll be okay with that. So my name is Jade Schofield. I'm a senior advisor with the Climate Risk and Resiliency Team with WSP Canada, and I'm joined with my colleague today, Christina Schwantes, who's an advisor with the Climate Risk and Resilience Team. And we have been working on the Climate Action Plan Phase One Discovery, and we, I'm going to pass it over to Christina to walk us through the first part of the presentation, and then I will move into wrap-up. And should you have any questions, we will be available to answer those afterwards as well. So Christina, over to you.
Okay. Thanks, Jade. Everyone can hear me okay? Great. Okay. So I am just sharing some, some slides. You should be seeing an agenda slide right now. Let me know if not. But essentially, we will present to you a bit of an overview of the project, the Phase One Discovery of the Climate Action Plan, including the main tasks we completed as part of this project, and some of the outcomes and results. So those are some guiding principles, focus areas, and recommendations, next steps for So those are some guiding principles, focus areas and recommendations, next steps for the development of Charlottetown's Climate Action Plan. So for a bit of context, we know that Charlottetown's climate is changing, we're seeing things such as increased temperatures, flooding, sea level rise, coastal erosion, those are some examples of climate-related impacts that are already and will continue to influence the community's health and wellbeing, the environment and the local economy. We also know climate change affects all of us, but the impacts are not felt equally across communities. There are disproportionate consequences for communities that are already vulnerable due to systemic inequalities. So in 2019, Charlottetown joined hundreds of municipalities in declaring a climate emergency and in the last few years has conducted some really important work on the climate change such as the Climate Risk and Resilience Assessment and Recommendations Report and, and other great initiatives. So now, the city of Charlottetown is preparing to create its Climate Action Plan and the intention of the plan is to help the community both build resilience to the impacts of climate change and extreme weather while also reducing our contribution to global climate change by reducing greenhouse gas emissions over both the short-term and long-term periods. So our Phase One Discovery Project is kind of the, the pre-work before the development of a Climate Action Plan. So the purpose of the discovery phase was really to understand how climate change is already affecting Charlottetown at a high level, identify some existing stressors in the community, what climate action is already taking place in Charlottetown and around P E I. And the point of our, our Phase One work is really to help set the stage, as Katrina said, and inform some of the key themes, guiding principles and approaches to community and partner engagement on the Climate Action Plan and to sort of start thinking about some of the topics and, and focus areas that will make up the Climate Action Plan as it's developed. So we broke our project into three kind of main activities, doing some background research, jurisdictional scan and, and benchmarking, engagement and reporting on those guiding principles and focus areas. I will highlight some of each of those tasks in the next slides. Okay, so starting with the jurisdictional scan, a background report and benchmarking exercise was completed, which really was to establish a current state for the city of Charlottetown's existing environmental and climate-related visions, goals, programs. We also looked at relevant federal, provincial, regional and peer municipality policies and programs related to environment and climate change in order to get some direction and a sense of best practices for climate change adaptation and mitigation. So the background report and benchmarking was used to inform the overall themes, guiding principles and, and indicators to be leveraged for the Climate Action Plan. It's a snapshot of some of the kind of opportunities and gaps identified through the background and benchmarking study. Opportunities really focused on leveraging the existing initiatives and programs that Charlottetown has already established and also identified some common focus areas in other peer jurisdictions that could fit really well with the Community Climate Action Plan such as capacity building, equity, resilient infrastructure, greenhouse gas emissions reduction. Some gaps were also identified and are areas that could be addressed as part of the Climate Action Plan development. So for example, understanding future climate change hazards and vulnerabilities with respect to which climate hazards pose the greatest risks to different populations in the community, different types of infrastructure and what aspects of the environment is most at risk as well, gaps in dedicated reporting tools, for example, to demonstrate progress or compare against peers towards climate change targets and goals. Moving into engagement, engagement as part of this project was guided by the Project Engagement Strategy, which really aimed to ensure that interested and affected groups were given an opportunity to provide feedback on how the Climate Change Action Plan is developed in the future. So engagement as part of this phase included three surveys, one with the community, one for city staff and council and one for key stakeholders, city staff workshops and some interviews with community organizations representing in total over 240 individuals, providing input on things ranging from climate-related concerns, actions already undertaken, barriers and constraints to participating in climate action planning. And then also, of course, the really important input on what makes a successful climate action plan and what focus areas folks would like to see in the future Climate Action Plan. And important to note here, this is, this is really a pre-engagement and as we move further into Climate Action Plan development, there would be a lot more engagement undertaken to gather information on actions and implementation for the plan. Just some excerpts from the engagement results, which show that climate change is a major concern across the community in Charlottetown and that the community sees responsibility for addressing climate change resting largely with government. A lot of the community is already taking, undertaking a lot of different types of climate action at home or at work, such as upgrading to more energy-efficient appliances or lighting. However, lots of community members felt that they could use more knowledge or support to address climate change. And there was a pretty high level of interest and involvement in climate action planning next steps. From our interviews and workshops with city staff and community groups, we recognized that there is some climate action being undertaken already with these groups, but again, that there is a need for more knowledge, expertise or resources to continue addressing climate change in the future and that these groups are largely looking to plan and implement more climate-related initiatives over the next few years, representing a good opportunity for partnerships and collaboration as part of the Climate Action Plan. And we spoke to some community groups to learn about some of the barriers and opportunities to participating in climate action planning process in order to kind of design an engagement approach for the next phase that allows us to get the best and most comprehensive feedback on the Climate Action Plan possible. So we spoke to groups such as BiPOC Usher, U P E I, Native Council of P E I, through interviews to discuss engagement approaches. Some of the things we heard was that there's sometimes a lack of awareness about engagement opportunities, that not all groups feel comfortable or welcome participating in, in traditional kind of public engagement processes and, and some other items listed on the screen. We also learned about desired outcomes for the Climate Action Plan, which really helps to start formulate the potential vision for, for the future Climate Action Plan. So some examples, again, on, on the bottom paragraph on the screen, you know, a sustainable city with trees, biodiversity, adapted infrastructure, safety, health, increased public awareness, some highlights there. So I'll turn it over to Jade now to talk through some of the results in terms of guiding principles and focus areas for the man.
Thanks Christina, and if we could jump to the next slide. So from the work that we did with the, the policy research and the what we heard initiatives and the engagement initiatives, we were really able to tease out some key areas that will serve as guiding principles for Phase Two and Three of the Climate Action Plan. And these principles are really the, the fundamental ground rules in terms of how to execute the next stages of the plan from the design of the strategy through to implementation and monitoring. So we heard very loud and clear throughout, not only the background review, but through the engagement, that an collaborative and inclusive approach is essential and that we need to work with the entire community to promote and prioritize widespread accessible and effective community engagement, particularly focusing on equity-deserving groups and indigenous peoples throughout the entire plan's process. We also want to make sure that the solutions that are outlined as part of the Climate Action Plan are equity-driven and, and informed so that climate change works towards reconciliation and equity across the community and empowers marginalized populations and prioritize solutions that reduce the equity gap. With climate science evolving at a rapid pace, it is critical that the plan is grounded in science, however also acknowledged and is informed with the longstanding historical indigenous knowledge that our First Nations peoples can bring. So it is making sure that you're leveraging current and highest-quality science in conjunctions with indigenous and practitioner knowledge to inform the decision-making, to ensure that the solutions meet those in which you are trying to solve the climate problem for. The next guiding principle is action-oriented and this is leveraging past progresses, so plans, programs and policies already in place, but also set the stage for future advancements in building resiliency to ensure that actions are not only achievable, but they are impactful and they serve now as well as far into the future. As we know, climate change is complex, it is not short-term, but it also feeds into a much longer-term vision. And as a result, those actions may need to have the monitoring and the payback that looks at that longer-term picture. And finally ambitious, Charlottetown has already demonstrated a lot of innovation around the climate change space and we heard loud and clear from stakeholders that they want to continue to demonstrate that leadership and some of those decisions will not be challenging, were not, will be challenging. However, an ambitious vision for a sustainable future is required in order to achieve overall goals. Next slide. So with the guiding principles outlined and as you heard from our background review and of what we heard, we were also able to derive some key focus areas in which the Climate Action Plan will be able to delve a little bit deeper through Phases Two and Three. And this includes municipal government, land use planning, buildings and energy, adaptive infrastructure, sustainable transportation, community health and emergency response, water and flooding, nature and green infrastructure, agriculture and resilient food systems. And it's very easy to draw a box around each of those focus areas, but we also understand that there will be interconnectedness between each of these areas and it will be important throughout the development of the, throughout the development of the plan, that that interconnectedness is also outlined through the way that it is monitored, implemented and measured through the implementation of the actions. Next slide. To delve a little bit deeper, when we speak to focus areas, so the first one highlighted is municipal government. And this is really the city of Charlottetown's role, overarching role and responsibility in the development and delivery of the Climate Action Plan. And although this is a community-based plan and the city will not have full control of all the actions in going on in order to achieve the goals in which this plan sets out, it provides the fundamental anchor for that delivery and long-term sustainability to achieve the goals. And this includes facilitating and supporting the development of things like a steering committee that is cross-functional and cross-jurisdictional that can lead the, the development and implementation of the plan itself, as well as setting up an integrated decision-making process so that climate change is applied to everything and every function that the city does and is also exemplified and promoted to other jurisdictions in which the city doesn't have full control. And the city can also be the leader when it comes to measuring and reporting progress because it is the conduit for all the other levels of government as well as the community groups that are working towards a climate change resilient and low-carbon future. And with municipal government, of course, land use planning is something that is also very important. And with buildings and transportation being typically the highest sources of emissions for the community and our communities, of course, being impacted greatly from the changing climate, climate actions will not only sit within the Climate Action Plan, it will be important to integrate some of that climate lens into other leading documents such as your official, official plans, zoning and development bylaws, looking at how you can look at climate change and development application requirements through things like green development standards and other initiatives, as well as establishing developer incentive tools to promote resilient and low-carbon development because the decisions you make today are going to be the ones that are sitting and facing the extremes of a changing climate in 20, 30, 40, 50 years' time. And following quite easily from land use planning is of course buildings and energy, the functions in which much of our community is made up of. And greenhouse gas emissions and buildings are directly related, so finding ways to update community and corporate greenhouse gas emissions that focus very much on the reduction of energy consumptions from buildings, looking at ways to transition municipal facilities to meet climate targets, but also act as the leaders for the, the broader community to follow suit and as well provide support for enhancing community programs that support residents and businesses in completing low-carbon building retrofits to meet both resiliency and G H G emission reduction targets. Next slide. We're also looking at adapted and resilient infrastructure. So one of the steps we've highlighted is the undertaking of a climate risk and vulnerability assessment with a focus on vulnerable populations and critical infrastructure. We know it's not physically or financially possible to replace every single piece of infrastructure across the community, to be resilient to every single severe weather or extreme weather event that could happen. However, by conducting this type of tool, you can prioritize and identify where you would have the greatest return on investment and protect the most people. Can also look at prioritizing and adapting existing infrastructure to address things like sea level rise, flooding and erosion. And looking at, going back to the, the buildings and land use planning, looking at establishing requirements for resilient new developments and infrastructure so that they can withstand the, so that new development can withstand the impacts of a changing climate. Sustainable transportation is really a blind, it's not just, it, it looks at two really kind of facets, you're looking at really trying to get people out of privately-owned vehicles, encouraging the use of transit and active transportation modes. And that includes, you know, developing the infrastructures and part, developing the infrastructure and partnerships to provide alternative mobility opportunities across the city. In addition to also looking at converting municipal fleet, public transit and of course private vehicles to electric and other zero-carbon opportunities as well. And then we have community health and emergency response and this really focuses on where the city can collaborate most with external organizations to better support particularly the vulnerable and marginalized people during disaster programming. As we know, marginalized people tend to be the most impacted, negatively impacted by a changing climate and it is important to make sure that the, the services offered to the community meet the needs of those people first and foremost in order to be able to provide good service delivery. We also want to encourage incorporating climate change into emergency response plans. One thing that's complex about climate change and emergency response is you're dealing with a sequence of events. For example, if you have a windstorm, you may also have flooding, you may also have power outages and you may also have tree damage. So how do you navigate all of those things under a climate lens while also ensuring that critical services can be delivered in those events with a focus on marginalized people within the community? And with that, we encourage you to collaborate with Health P E I, to look at climate change under a public health lens, to understand where services could be enhanced to become more resilient. Next slide. So water and flooding, so flooding tends to be the most costly climate impact that communities see in the short-term. It causes existential damage to both property and infrastructure. So finding ways to prioritize resilience within mitigation approaches for both water and wastewater infrastructure will likely be one of the most cost-beneficial ways to become a climate-resilient city over time. We'd also encourage advancing requirements for stormwater infrastructure design to accommodate projected increases in precipitation. We see across Canada that stormwater infrastructure in particularly is designed using historical climate events, but we know that precipitation numbers do not look like they did 30, 40, 50 years ago. And using climate forecasts and the best in climate science will ensure, sure that that infrastructure is informed to be withstand a changing climate. And then of course, advancing flood prevention programs for residents and businesses so that they know how to be prepared and how to respond. that they know how to be prepared and how to respond should a flood or, um, event, um, happen on their property. Nature and green infrastructure, nature and green infrastructure is a really strange one because nature and infrastructure is of course both impacted by a change in climate, but is also a solution. So it is going to be really critical for the city to consider increasing urban tree canopy to protect and restore natural heritage areas so that they can contribute as much as possible to reducing heat impact, to carbon sequestration. But it is also going to be important that maintenance and protection of these systems takes place so that they can thrive under climate conditions. And this may include things like looking at ways to increase your water processes for watering trees during high heat events or increase pruning so that they can withstand higher wind events. And then there's also the incorporation of green infrastructure solutions into municipal assets. Um, you know, moving away from a hundred percent gray infrastructure, um, service delivery to incorporating more natural systems which can withstand and have more flexibility in dealing with a changing climate. And last but not least, agriculture and resilient food systems. We all need to eat and we know that Charlottetown relies heavily on local farming and local agricultural system. So identifying, uh, ways to reduce food waste, increase food security and access to local food, particularly during, um, you know, those strained weather events. Also looking at ways to work, um, with the community to establish food programs, increase local food production, uh, particularly within the city with a focus on marginalized people. And of course, supporting the agricultural community, um, because they have a lot of changes to make and they are dealing with a lot of pressures too, in, in terms of adopting not only to a low carbon, but also becoming resilient, um, when it comes to its farming practices as well. So we'll move into the next, uh, couple of slides here. So with the focus areas kind of outlined, um, we wanted to provide a couple of key kind of recommendations, um, for, for council and staff to consider to take away into phase two and three of the climate action plan. So first and foremost, um, communicate, communications within the broader community is going to be a key foundation, um, fi- foundation to the, the success of the plan. And it is important that the engagement process is at the very beginning, starts at the very beginning of the plan, all the way through to the implementation and has a strong focus on equity and inclusion. We also encourage the city to analyze future climate data to understand specifically to the city of Charlottetown, where you are exposed and what the hazards are under a changing climate. And then from there, we recommend you undertake a climate risk and vulnerability assessment so you can understand the consequences of acting and not acting so that you can start to prioritize where you need to develop actions. We also encourage, um, the city to undergo a regular community-wide greenhouse gas inventory so that you can understand where the future and current greenhouse gas emission sources and sinks are so that you can target programs where they provide the biggest return on investment, not only from a climate perspective, but for energy efficiency and of course from carbon pricing. We encourage the city to set targets for emission reductions that align with current climate science. We've seen through our jurisdictional scan, the provincial, federal, and municipal targets are not in alignment. And we encourage the city to consider leveraging the latest science from the International Panel of Climate Change in order to set its cities, uh, to set the stage and set, uh, the journey for the city through this plan. And when it comes to the developing action planning, and we've highlighted this, I think a few times, that ensuring that an equity lens is applied so the actions do hit the target groups of who is most impacted, but you also are leveraging several tools. Um, and this could be in the form of policies, programs, infrastructure, and education. And then the plan is only going to be successful if you measure its success. And we encourage the city to develop a monitor and evaluation progress to regularly track process and report back to the community, uh, the successes and in some cases failures of the climate action plan so that lessons can be learned across the jurisdiction, um, so that you can continue to work together to find solutions that work for the city of Charlottetown. And we also encourage, um, external benchmarking so that you can continue to, to not only be recognized as a leader, but also learn from others that are going through the same process for you by committing to reporting through a third-party organization. This not only demonstrates accountability and transparency in your effort under a climate emergency, but it also helps to make sure you're on track and, and you're staying current with a field that is ever-evolving. So to wrap up, there are really five key steps that we've love everyone to take away from today's presentation. And that is first and foremost, close some of the data gaps so that when you go into developing phases two and three of the climate action plan, you have all of the information in front of you to be able to make the best decisions. And this includes the development of an asset inventory and management plan so that you know where your current conditions are, as well as a more in-depth urban forest or green infrastructure study to see, uh, where there are opportunities to prioritize for the greening of the community. A flood study leveraging future climate projections so that you can understand where the pressures currently are within the community and where they likely will be into the future, as well as an examination of your emergency management plan to see where climate is already integrated and where gaps may exist. From there, we would encourage you to develop an implementation team, again, across departmental, external stakeholder team that reflects the community will ensure that the plan serves the community as a whole. Uh, and with that, we would really encourage, uh, to continue building a relationship with local First Nations and marginalized groups to participate in the plan and make sure that the plan truly reflects their expertise and benefits that they are seeking throughout the plan's creation and fosters collaborative decision-making. From a financial perspective, um, upfront, climate change can look quite expensive. However, uh, climate change should always, actions should always provide some long-term return in investment. And with that, I would encourage councils to consider, um, opportunities for short-term funding to support phases two and three of the plan. We've included in the report several, uh, fi- financial opportunities that could be explored in the ways of external funding or internal, uh, financial mechanisms that would support some of the shorter-term funding, um, processes for the development of the plan. There will also be the midterm funding and this will be the short-term actions. Um, so these will be, what I like to say is the low-hanging fruit, the easy wins. Um, but there will be funding required to support some of those actions once phase three has been established. But the one thing to really emphasize is that climate action isn't quick. We are talking about 20, 30 years and actions that take place today will have impacts down the road. And so, um, from a financial perspective, um, really will need to examine, um, what is required in order for Charlottetown to transition to a zero-carbon and resilient community overall. And this maybe, um, may require the city to consider some out-of-the-box mechanisms, uh, that we have highlighted in the report, um, for consideration. Once we also highlight the phase two, the plan is the next logical step, once those pieces have been completed. And phase two really should can contain an engagement plan, um, a baseline community-level greenhouse gas inventory, again, to highlight where the sources and sinks of emissions are coming from. A community-level climate risk assessment so we can understand the, the vulnerabilities and hazards across the community. Set targets that are in line with, uh, the latest science and start to identify the co-benefits with other planned strategies and priorities that are happening across this community because quite often, climate action is also good economic action, it's also good social and equity action. It's very rarely, uh, a standalone win for the community. And last but not least, uh, phase three is implementation and, and this is where it gets exciting, but the development of a detailed action plan that defines the roles, the responsibilities, and the costs, as well as an implementation framework. So how we're going to go about implementing, how we prioritize these actions. And of course, ways to measure key, um, our successes through key performance indicators so that we can celebrate every single little win because they will be some, there will be some really little wins and there'll be some really big wins and it's important to track all of those. And of course, as I mentioned, the third-party reporting. So with that, I will draw the presentation to a close and we welcome any questions. So thank you.
Thank you Jade, thank you Christina. Any questions or do you just want to, okay, councillor, councillor McCabe and then councillor Matar.
Thank you girls and thanks for that, uh, presentation. It's exciting to see, I think it's really important and we've all committed to making sure that we, um, do everything we can as a city to, uh, commit to climate action plan for sure. It was an awful lot of information, I'm sure I'm going to have many questions, uh, whether it's the time of night or what, but trying to follow everything and understand, I'm like, did we already start this plan? Anyway, I'll follow up with Katrina, but I'm, I'd love to have a copy of this presentation and maybe then, I'm sure we'll be circling back for an opportunity, but I just wanted to thank you for your time.
Yeah, we'll get that presentation sent out councillor McCabe.
Thank you Katrina, councillor Matar.
Uh, great, thank you, uh, for the presentation this evening. Uh, just more out of curiosity, I guess, I'm looking, you know, you have Candace's climate plan, you have the provincial government added, climate adaptation plan, and now you have the city of Charlottetown's act, climate action. How do they all coincide with each other and who's leading and, and, you know, are we, are we part of the big picture or, you know, I guess I'm just trying to figure out if we're not tripping over each other or we all following the same common goals here when it comes to a municipality versus the province versus the country?
Yeah, that's a great question. I don't know Jade and Christina, do you want to speak to that or would you like me to?
Oh, absolutely. Um, through the mayor, uh, thank you for the question. I think it's a great one and a very relevant one. I think the one thing that I have seen in my experience with local, um, climate action is at the city level, that's where the rubber hits the road when it comes to climate action. Um, you are the, the frontline when it comes to working with the community, um, in terms of capacity building, in terms of sharing ideas, as well as understanding what works for your community. So there, there isn't necessarily a duplication of effort at the three levels of government, but more a, a way to find the synergies and co-benefits. And I think the city of Charlottetown knows its community better than anyone else and knows its priorities better than anyone else. So by undertaking a climate action plan, it can make sure it's prioritizing, um, and getting the upper levels of government to prioritize actions within the community in a way that addresses its needs. Um, and then of course, again, that monitoring and tracking, um, it gets very lost at a provincial and at a federal level of the successes because climate change is big and scary and overwhelming, but at a local level, you can track those wins and you can track those opportunities, uh, to ensure that, you know, the momentum is, uh, is maintained in order to actually achieve those long-term goals.
Councillor Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, uh, uh, obviously everybody was looking forward to this climate action plan and I want to thank you, Christina and Jade. I guess with all this information, um, my only disappointment was it would have been nice to have this package to read and digest it so we would have lots of questions because this is something that we've been waiting for. Um, so it's kind of going to be reversed now, we're going to get, get a hold of the, of the package and then if we have any questions, I guess, I'm not sure where that's going to go Katrina, uh, because they've already done their presentation. Uh, but next time it would be nice to have the package and let everybody read it before we come, because this was a lot of information, there's a lot of information we've been looking for and, you know, it looks really great, but, um, yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to have it beforehand because we could have lots of questions for you, but. Anyway, thanks for the presentation. It was, it was, it was good, it was good. So, and you do have the presentation to give us now? Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
So Katrina, if, or Jade and Christina, you know, after looking over the package, we could have both of them come back and speak to us.
Yeah, we could potentially invite them or I'm also available and can speak to it as well. We had the, um, we had this presentation built into the original contract, working with WSP, um, and so we invited Christina and Jade here to speak, but I'm also able to.
Yeah, so Katrina, you can come back and, and give us an overview with some of the questions that may be asked, is that all right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is that all right councillor, it's a good question, it is. Because I know how important it is that we take this plan and go with it.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of good points in there and I know I wrote down some myself and I mean, you know, um, the climate risk and vulnerability assessment, I mean, that's something that we should be doing now.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, there's a lot of good information there, it's just for me, it would have been nice to read it and then have the presentation done by the experts and then, uh, but anyway, we'll get at it.
No.
We'll get it done.
Did you want it to go through your committee first and then come back or what do you wish to do with the questions?
That's usually what happens.
Yeah. Can we do that Katrina at the next meeting that we've got it out before the next standing committee for environment sustainability that we can discuss it at the next meeting? Is that all right councillor?
Yeah, certainly.
And then we can bring it back to council. I know I had some questions about collaborating with external organizations to better support vulnerable marginalized persons in disaster planning. We all know about that, so this would be a good opportunity to look at how we can set up models that we can work together with United Way, Charlottetown Mutual Aid, Salvation Army and so forth.
Absolutely.
Thank you Katrina. Thank you Jade, thank you Christina. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you Katrina. And we are going to heritage resolution, proposed addition to property at 275 Kent Street, PID number 344861. Do you want to read the resolution? Uh, CAO, how?
Thank you, Your Worship. Heritage Resolution One, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff and seconded by councillor McCabe. Be it resolved that the proposed addition to the property located at 275 Kent Street, PID 344861 be approved and that any comments from the heritage board on the project will be included for consideration as it proceeds through the planning board and design reviewed board pro- process.
Okay, and Madam Chair, do you want to say any words to that Deputy Mayor? I'll just put you up there, hold on. Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. No, it's pretty straightforward, the information's in your package. Um, you will see this project again, um, through planning board. So, um, but if anyone does have any questions, I'm here as well as the manager from Planning and Heritage is also here. Thank you.
Councillor Ramsey, question?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, uh, councillor Yankoff. Is this, uh, part of the Holland College?
Yes, it's down on Kent Street.
Right, exactly, okay. No, I drove by and I just wondered, it's the same property.
It is, sir.
Thank you very much.
And it goes back to planning board, right? Correct? Yeah. And then design review board.
You will have noted in your package that this actually piece of property is owned by the province but managed by the Holland College. And, um, so they're just looking to encompass that in with the renovations, um, all into one. Yeah, but yeah, you'll definitely see it again.
And we pass it on to the manager, he's got a few words?
Certainly.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, Your Worship, I think, uh, this is already, uh, the variance has been, uh, provided on this, you folks have already signed off on that and it's gone through the design review, so this is the last step. So, uh, uh, you know, again, the only reason it's here, usually applications don't come uh, to council from heritage board, but this one was a designated heritage property and it had a design review and the coupling of those two was kind of unique. So the, the heritage bylaw says it must be, the final disposition is up to council. Thank you, Your Worship.
Know the property very well, just around the corner from where I grew up. Councillor McCabe, just one sec there councillor.
No, I was just clarifying because I knew we had already gone through all the different points and this was kind of the last, the last one that we had to bring back here.
Questions called? All those in favor? Councillor Dran?
Dran.
Councillor Beck?
Jay.
Okay. Nine. Nine zero. Thank you, Mr. Forbes. Next on is our enter manager of economic development, uh, festival events, tourism. Huh? Coming back from Halifax, okay. Want to read that? Want to read the resolution?
Thank you, Your Worship.
CAO, CAO.
Economic Tourism and Cultural Development Committee Resolution Number One, moved by councillor McKinnon, seconded by councillor MacLeir. Be it resolved that city council accept the amended tax incentive strategy policy, P dash ED dash five as attached, effective immediately.
Councillor McKinnon, do you want to give any background or do you want to just turn it over to the, to the manager? What's your wish?
I'll turn it over to the manager alone for, okay. I'll turn it over to the manager, Long, for, okay. Mr. Long?
Thank you very much, Your Worship, through the chair. Back on April 20th, the Economic Development, Tourism, and Culture Committee reviewed this particular file. It's been ongoing for some time now with respect to required amendments of the tax incentive program. Sometime back under the previous Economic Development Officer and former administration, this item was to come to council, and unfortunately, due to an oversight, that did not happen. So we're bringing this back on to, back on to track. There was a request that came to the municipality through the P I Bio Alliance, as well as some discussions with the Charlotte Town Area Development Corporation in terms of how they could be implemented into this policy, given the elevated development that's happening within the Bioscience Commons in the West Royalty area. So there's simply two changes that really impact this, and they are directly related to item number three on page two. This is a new item, new wording, that would allow proposed projects owned by the Charlotte Town Area Development Corporation to be eligible if projects are in support of 1A and B and 2A. And then just a little bit further down under item number five, there was an amendment to the wording here that would include or biotechnology-focused developments, whether private sector or not-for-profit, including the BioKymens Research Park. Beyond these two particular items, the remainder of the amendments are just housekeeping items. The other thing that's important to note is that although council agrees hopefully to support this amendment, any new requests, although they would be evaluated by staff in conjunction with the departmental manager and the CAO and/or director, requests for new funding would always come back to the committee for approval. So there is a secondary level of support that is required in order for this to move forward. So they are the, those are the amendments that we're bringing forward at this particular time, and if there's any questions, happy to answer.
Okay. Councillor Bernard and Councillor Yankoff. Councillor Bernard.
Thank you. Thank you, Wayne. I just caught you there, but you were saying that it would come back to the committee for approval. You mean, come back to committee for recommendations to council? For the funding?
Yes. Well, funding would first go back to the committee, Councillor Bernard, for consideration through a recommendation of staff, and then staff would bring it, sorry, the committee would then advance it, I'm assuming, on to the finance committee or directly to council.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Is that your question, Councillor? Councillor Dran or Councillor Beck, any questions about the proposed changes?
No, thank you.
Councillor Beck?
No. Good with me.
Wayne, just for clarification, this is no grandfathering, this is going forward.
This particular amendment would take effect this evening if it does pass by council, so it's moving forward. There's no on-ramp for grandfathering to go back in time, and so it would be effective as of today.
Okay. Okay.
Questions called.
Questions called? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Dran?
In favor.
Councillor Beck?
I'm good.
Nine zero, Councillor Twill absent. Mr. Long, thank you very much. Hopefully, you're very well-rested from the weekend and heard we coming up. Thank you very much. Motion adjourned?
Yes.
Motion adjourned. Thank you very much.